I'll order the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, September 11th, 2018, at now five o'clock. City Clerk please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Pachasinski.
Here.
Tim Riepel.
Here.
Henry Twetton.
Here.
Mark DeMers.
Present.
Does Terry McCormick. Number one, update from American Crystal Sugar. Mary Gander.
You know, for a while, we worked with American Crystal on the various odors that were coming from the plant, and that was about 10 and 12 years ago. And I know you guys went to work on the ponds and made great progress, and then it did still seem that there was some trouble 10 and 12 years ago, and eight and seven and six and five. And then you found that the last pile brought in from the yard was causing some problems, and you fixed that. And it occurred to me that over about the last two years, I haven't detected anything other than just a little bit of that toasted smell that comes just on occasion. And I thought, you know what? We bring you all in here when there's some trouble, but we do not bring you in to find out how you fixed it. You know, the steps that you took, the expense that you had, and some of the ongoing plans for the future. It's kind of easy to take a company for granted that's been built in our community since 1926. I just looked at your website and see that you have a total of 303 employees, 228 all year, 75 in the campaign, also serving 618 growers, of course, all the trans-system employees, all of the other affiliated contractors that we bring in. I feel we have developed a very good partnership between American Crystal and the city. You're a great utility customer. We try to coordinate transportation in and out during harvest. And I just want you all to know that we, as a city, how we appreciate all that you bring to the community through the sugar industry, all of the good employment, all of the good, just everything. I mean, it's a good staple for our farmers. Some other crops seem to go up and down from year to year, but they can count on that piece as being a good part of their farm. And so it was my hope that you all could come in and just give us an update on any of these items, and also thinking ahead to the future, what you have for plans, that we, as a city, want to partner with you going forward.
Sure.
I'll start out. I'm Lloyd Kennedy. I'm the factory manager here at American Crystal Sugar in East Grand Forks. And with me tonight is Corey Kritzberger. He's the egg operations manager, and he'll give an update kind of on the harvest and what we see for crop potential. And then Josh Gleason is our environmental compliance supervisor, so he directly supervises the water treatment and the ponds and all our environmental permits. But I want to start out by thanking you for inviting us. It has been several years since we have come and met with the city council of East Grand Forks and given an update. And you're right, this has been a long process. What you may or may not know is that handling water is a major component of our business. Sugar beets are typically, on average, 76 to 77 percent water, which for East Grand Forks, that equates to over 450 million gallons of water that we bring into our plant every processing season. You know, some of that we evaporate, some of it we condense into clean water, but some of it has to go through our water treatment plant. And that process alone is associated with orders that we've dealt with over the years. And many years ago, we really started looking at things, and one thing, there's not a huge amount of technology out there that applies to our industry. We're quite a bit different than municipal treatment plants and other industries, the amount and strength of the water that we deal with. So it's a lot of the stuff that we had to invest and look at, where we're learning as we go. And just to give you a sense of what that is, since 2006 through 2017, here in East Grand Forks, American Crystal Sugar has invested nearly $40 million alone in just environmental, primarily dealing with water, whether it's the volume of water or how we treat the water, in the process and training. Not all that was successful, like you mentioned. There were some setbacks in some of that, those expenditures, that didn't turn out like we wanted them to. But we have made great strides, and I think, you know, as of late, the last several years, we are seeing the fruits of those investments and the fruits of those efforts to try to improve and be a better part of the community as far as orders go. We continue to spend, and we continue to invest and try to make things better. We are very proud to be part of the East Grand Forks community, and we hope we portray that, and we want to continue that relationship and continue to be a good member of the community. So we look forward to giving updates, and we greatly appreciate the invite. So with that, I'll turn it over to Josh Gleason, who oversees that department, and he can kind of cover some of the more recent things we've done, and some of the things that we have in the more immediate future as far as ways to continue to make improvements towards the orders that we generate.
So Josh?
Thanks, Lloyd. Thanks for me as well. It's nice to, you know, see that people are noticing. A lot of work goes into trying to mitigate odor, and it's good to see that it is noticed. Lloyd mentioned, you know, we've spent roughly $40 million in improvements. More recently, 2013 through 2016, we're right around that $5 million mark. Some of those projects included an upgrade to our aeration on our pond system. We've undertaken multiple projects to reduce the amount of water that's generated from the factory, including increased communication between the wastewater department and the operations themselves, which has played a large role in it. You know, we spend a lot of time identifying sources and trying to come up with solutions on them. We're integrating more technology into that. We take roughly 70 manual readings every 24 hours to identify any source and take action on those sources. We've improved our screening to remove the organics from the water, so that the water that does go out to the ponds carries less risk to generate odor. Again, the additional monitoring equipment kind of helps us make better decisions on where we head from where we're at. So coming up, we've got a couple projects in the works. We are improving our drainage onsite, that kind of get the water to the ponds quicker, doesn't sit out there, increase our risk of soaking up, you know, anything that will increase odor. And we're also increasing some aeration at the ponds, creating some redundancy. Most recently, we've completed our anaerobic clarifier cover. It's the large structure. It's probably noticeable from the ballpark. And that's kind of one of those sources that's close to, you know, our neighboring residents that we thought would be kind of some low-hanging fruit. So the structure itself's in place. We plan to have that system online in the next couple months. It's already reducing odors. Once we can start pulling that methane and using it as a renewable energy in the factory, we expect to see good results out of it. So, you know, moving forward, we're just, again, identifying sources. It's a constant battle. There's, every day, things change. So the guys are adapting. We're trying new techniques and just trying to stay on top of it. So, you know, appreciate the opportunity to kind of explain it.
Thank you. I did actually stop in the neighborhood and ask people. I thought, am I the only one that just my smell are bad? But I said, have you caught anything in the last couple of years? And everyone that I talked to said, not a thing. It's been really, really good. So it's paying off in the neighborhoods and all throughout our community.
Great.
And that's, several years ago, we started identifying big sources, as Josh mentioned, and putting systems in place to deal with those and mitigate those issues. Where we're at now is, we're fairly confident. I mean, there's always risk and potential for issues. But we start identifying even small sources, and like the clarifier, that the structure that you can see from Fifth Avenue is one example where it doesn't always smell, but it is one that's a source that we identified and we dealt with it. It's a big aluminum cover and aluminum structure. It's nice and bright that you can see. But that's what that is geared for. So it really gets to a point where we're identifying small sources. And one thing I didn't mention, we sit on roughly 800 acres, the East Grand Forks site, and stormwater, rain events are big events for us as well. We collect all that water. That doesn't get discharged to the city's stormwater system. That's all collected and has to go through our water treatment system. So those variables always play a factor into our processes. So there continue to be challenges, and there will be challenges in the future, but we are making good progress, and hopefully we can continue down that avenue and keep having nice invites like this, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Just a little update on the egg side. You know, we spend a fair amount of money. Part of my responsibilities out here in East Grand Forks is beet storage and harvest management. And, you know, last year, we had a record crop in the Ritter Valley. We piled over 12 million tons of beets in the Ritter Valley. And when you have that and, you know, reduced smell and odors, part of what I'm charged with is storing the beets better. And of course, the better the beet store, the less problems we have in the factories and less stormwater and issues that Josh has to deal with. But we've had a number of expansions out in our factory yard, increased ventilation in the piles. You probably noticed we were probably covering a few more piles with poly, you know, than we've used to and things like that. So on the egg side, beet storage is, we're continuing to look for better ways to get the sugar in the Yible and not in the, you know, in other places. So on, just a little update on where we're at right now, we're looking at another really nice beet crop. We're probably looking at 28 to 30 tons in the Ritter Valley, somewhere in that neighborhood. Last year, we were just over 30, so, you know, fairly close to last year. We're looking at, you know, maybe 11 and a half to maybe 11.8 million tons. So again, similar to last year, quality's been excellent this year so far. We're looking at starting beet harvest roughly October 1st, like we always do for full stockpile. So, you know, we're off and running. We've already sliced over a million tons of beets out of the, you know, 10, 10 and a half million we plan to put down for stockpiles. So we've done a fair amount of work in the first month of campaign already, and things are, things appear to be, or look like they're going well, and we've got a good crop coming, the way it looks. So we're looking to cash in on that.
Anybody have any questions for them, or anything else to add?
Thanks for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. Thanks for the good work.
Thank you. Thanks.
Move on to number two, request of word, 18 CP3 parking lot improvement. Mr. Emery.
So, as of last Friday, we received quotes for the downtown parking lot improvement project. I did send out the request to quotes to three contractors. I sent it out to Op Construction, Stratocorporation, and RJ Zaverlin Sons. We did receive two quotes. We received quotes from Op Construction and Stratocorporation. I have, I did do, give you guys a handout with basically the bid tabulation. Numbers did come in substantially higher than we were anticipating. I was estimating at about $86,000. The low bid from Op Construction came in at about $114,306, with the high bid from Stratocorporation at $144,402. Just looking at the numbers, you know, the biggest, one of the biggest differences was basically the bituminous prices. Last winter, last spring, when we bid the senior center project, our two low bid prices on asphalt, we were at $72 a ton and $80 a ton. So actually, in my estimate, I was actually estimating about $80 a ton for this project, just knowing it was a little smaller project quantity-wise. You can kind of see from the bids we received, you know, the bituminous prices were substantially higher. And then even some of the storm sewer pricing costs were significantly higher than what I was anticipating. I did visit with Zaverls on, I guess, why they did not submit a quote, and it was strictly timing. They just did not feel that, you know, even with a little bit of underground work that was on this project, that they would have time to get that in. So just didn't feel, you know, if they had to go out and get a subcontractor, that they, you know, could be competitive. So I guess with that, you know, my recommendation, I think the numbers are high. I think you could get better numbers if you get this out on the street, probably December, January. So I guess unless, you know, you as a council, you know, really have your heart set on getting this bituminous down this year, I, my recommendation would be to probably reject the bids and, you know, we try to advertise again November, December, January.
And guess what? Why would mobilization be so much higher in Strata than everything else?
Why would Op?
No, Strata. Strata, $21,000, top.
Oh, you know, like I've said, I've always, as long as I've been in the business, I've never understood why contractors put money where they do sometimes. It's, you know, where they put their bonding or their mobilization or, you know. I don't know. You'll see that all the time. Maybe Mark can give us some insight from a contractor standpoint.
No comment?
I just, it's part of the thing I've said before, is people put money all over. So when you try to compare items to items, it takes, there's a lot of science, and there's a lot of witchy sticks trying to figure out what people put money where.
Yep. I guess like I've probably told the councils before, I guess what I ultimately look at is the bottom number, you know, because you'll drive yourself crazy trying to compare contractor to contractor and where they put their money. It's, you know, I guess it all comes down to the bottom dollar amount eventually.
Mr. Grassel.
So the underground, is that required? Storm sewer, middle of that thing, is that required? I mean, we can't grade that thing, you get it out away and down?
Everything over there right now is really flat. I mean, you could do it. You're going to have a lot of bird baths. You may not have good positive drainage away from, like the VFW building there. So I just felt, you know, for the relatively small investment you're going to make, I think you're going to be, have a lot better product and not have any water issues.
I just wondered.
Yep.
I'm okay with rejecting them.
No.
Mr. DeMers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a procedural thing. Was this a bid or a quote?
Nope. It was a, it was a quote. I mean, I originally sent it out based on my estimate, knowing I was on $100,000. I did send it out for quotes. I did have a little concern when numbers came in above the $100,000, but kind of did find out after the fact, too, that as of like August 1st of 2018, the state law for quotes has been raised to actually $175,000 now. So.
And that's what you can, it doesn't mean you have to, right?
Doesn't mean you have to, right. It was basically come down to timing, too, Mark. If we did quotes, I could, you know, request quotes, ask for them back quicker than if we went through a formal bidding process.
I was just curious, because it said quote, and it said bid tabs, and.
Right, yes. It was quotes.
And we were hovering around that $100,000 mark, which used to be.
Anybody else have anything to add to that? Think you have a direction on that? Number three, request for change order for interconnect lift station. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to, I guess, kind of bring this forward, I guess, rather than just proceeding. Kind of since we started up the lift station project last November, we have been experiencing high levels of hydrogen sulfide gas inside the lift station, which ultimately can lead to deterioration of your concrete walls. We're actually dealing with that right now with the master lift station, as we still got the rehabilitation project that we're going to do late this fall or early next spring on that project. And also, probably more important than anything, is just safety for the workers. High levels of H2S gas can be, you know, dangerous, if not life-threatening to the workers. We've looked at a couple different options there. We did look at the exhaust system, and then Jason has also did a little bit of research and talking to different vendors. And we looked at the possibility of adding some chemicals, basically at lift station four and lift station five, which ultimately go to the master lift station and then out to the interconnect lift station. The prices he had got for the addition of chemicals, we were looking at about $40,000 annually, just in chemical costs, and then about $13,000, kind of the first year, just for kind of the initial equipment and setup fee. So we felt, you know, with that, you know, trying to protect our investment that, you know, the city has made with the interconnect lift station, you know, trying to protect that, and then, you know, safety of the workers, we are looking, I guess, kind of for your approval to move ahead with putting in an exhaust system. We would run that through the project. We have got pricing actually from the contractors at this point, so these, you know, numbers are based on actual figures we've received from the contractor. So with, you know, basically what we're looking at is $43,792, what it would cost to put in this exhaust system. And then what I did, too, is wanted to kind of give you a, kind of a snapshot of where we're at with the interconnect project and also the decommissioning project, because really it is kind of one large pool of funds. But so on the interconnect project, our total contract amount, we were at about $5.469 million. Project costs to date on that were $5,497, so about $28,000 over our estimated contract amount. And that basically is just due to increases in some of the, you know, maybe like seeding quantities. You know, we may have had small increases in piping. Being we had a unit price bid, we're able to, in lieu of doing a change order for every little item, we could just increase, you know, quantities. So again, with that, you know, we're about 1% over, you know, what the contract amount was. But then along the way, too, we have had some change orders. We did have basically change orders one, two, and three. Those have already been brought forth to the council and approved. I did put in basically change order number four, again, would be the proposed exhaust system. And then right now, I am working with Zaverls, just to kind of finish up, clean up the project, take care of any miscellaneous items. Right now, we're, you know, we're at about $16,000 in potential additional change orders, which ultimately, I mean, change order number four and five could be combined and put into one change order. But for discussion purposes, I just kind of kept them separate. We do, both on the interconnect and the decommissioning project, we did have about a 5% contingency. So with the change orders, you can see the contingency balance, you know, with changes one through five, we would still be at about $16,183. And then right now, with the decommissioning project, total contract amount is about $4.4 million. Kind of what's been paid to date is about $1.4 million. So, you know, we're approximately about 32% complete with that project. Again, we have the 5% contingency fund in there, so about $220,965. To date, we do not have any change orders. So our contingency balance there is, you know, still approximately $221,000. And then just kind of, as a good reminder, I guess, for everyone, too, that we did, you know, receive for this project, too, we did receive $5.3 million in grant dollars from the state. So I guess with that, I would, I guess, entertain any questions you may have. But I guess what we're just looking for is just kind of your approval to proceed with putting in this exhaust system.
Mr. Grassel.
What is, what is the potential upwind, downwind with this system?
Yeah, I mean, we could potentially, depending on wind direction, I mean, because basically all we're doing with the exhaust system is we're getting the odor further up into the atmosphere for dispersment, you know, through the wind. So, I mean, we could have some.
I sure like the idea of just properly exhausting it, protecting our workers versus chemical. The annual cost, repeated cost of the chemical, and it never, that cost never goes away. It keeps coming. It only goes up from there. And plus, the chemical is just one more substance introduced into there that you didn't need. And maybe because it's contained in such a small space, you're just putting it to the outside. I would hope that once it hit the atmosphere, it wouldn't be much for the neighbors.
And I'm hoping to. I mean, we got almost, you know, other than probably one resident there, you know, we probably got close to a mile before any homes there, so.
I guess one thing that we could do is the hydrogen sulfide gas isn't anything that's new. It's nothing that's been created from this, our new interconnect or anything. It's something that's always been going on out there. But it's with the wastewater ponds, it's just been going into it and kind of dissipating up through the water. That's all. So it's always been kind of being released into the atmosphere in that area already. It might be just diffuse somewhere or going through the water, but it's, so hopefully it should maybe just be more concentrated in that one particular area. But hopefully it shouldn't be that much of a difference to what's already happening out there.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Emery on that? Mr. Pachasinski?
I see this as a necessary change, that it's something I'll support and don't have any reason not to.
And I think what, you know, what we got to look at, I mean, we did, in the wet well portion of the lift station, we did put in a coating system on the concrete walls, you know, to help protect them from hydrogen sulfide gas. But, you know, the levels are way higher than I think we ever anticipated, so we just need to take some additional measures.
Anything else from anybody? No, to move on. Appreciate it, Mr. Emery. Move on to the discussion of 2019 proposal budget. Mr. Murphy, Ms. Anderson?
Sure. I guess I'll just get started here right away. We have had several meetings as far as staff and department heads over these last couple weeks to go through this, take what we're hearing from the council, and put together budget revisions and estimates and recommendations based on what we're hearing from the council. I don't know, Carla, if you want to step in with kind of what we talked about? Do you want me to take it, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. So what we were talking about is the direction that we've been getting from some of the council, and Mayor in particular, as far as, you know, overall number that he is comfortable in seeing. We've been taking that into consideration as far as our proposed property tax levy increase. So at this point, the short of it is, is what we're recommending as department heads, or I'm recommending as administrator, at this particular point for the preliminary levy to be set later this month, since you cannot go down, but you can, you cannot go up, excuse me, but you can, you can go down. At this point, with the changes we've made, we are comfortable with recommending a reduction in the, what we've been recommending is the levy from 14% to 10%. We're still holding some room in there for the potential of the one additional position. And so just, so for that matter, so we recommend, so I guess I'm recommending the 10% be set for the preliminary levy. We have had some good news as far as what our potential health insurance costs will be. We will know that finalized should be this Friday, so we can move forward on that. It is less than what we, than what we put in for our placeholder, what the maximum would be. So we have made that change. We're also making a change in the amount for the police department overtime. You know, Chief Hedlund and I are working on that together to reduce that. And I guess with that, I guess that's, as far as for the preliminary levy, that's my recommendation. If there's any questions, I can certainly take them as far as where we looked at some of these. Unless, Carla, if there's anything you'd like to add.
Mr. Pachasinski?
Just one question. The changes that you've, that you're recommending, did you leave the fund balance alone?
At this point, yes.
Okay. And what is the proposed fund balance in the?
I mean, what the addition would be?
If it's adopted, yeah.
Carla, do you have any answer?
No. Actually, we're looking at just balancing our budget. We haven't looked at increasing the fund balance, which we were not directed to do. So we're just looking at that we would, revenues and expenses would equal. Actually, what we looked at so far is that we took the $50,000 out of the street construction, because we increased it from 250 to 300. So that was a $50,000, $50,000 reduction. fifty-dollar, fifty thousand dollar reduction. Like you said, we did that with overtime, and we also looked at, I looked at sick leave con... Our sick leave balances and vacation balances, we have to adjust per Gatsby. I took those out, which is about fifty-one thousand dollars, because in the last couple of years, we haven't had to increase them, so really what happens is that our sick leave from one year to the next kind of stays the same. So we haven't had to increase our liability form, which is an expense. So that was about, that was a hundred thousand right there.
Basically, we're looking at, to get where we, let's say we're going to get down to five percent, we have another four and a half, five percent to look at going forward later.
Correct. And again, I'm recommending the ten percent, however, where we're at with what we've been looking at for some of our changes, we are actually under that. However, for the preliminary levy, we'd like to keep it at the ten percent. We are closer to the eight percent right now.
Anybody else have any questions regarding the budget this time? I know we're going to have more discussion on it, and I know that the department has been working together on getting to the word, you know, they've been guided to for the number that the council is comfortable with, and I think they've been doing a great job at that, and I appreciate that, thank them. And I hope that, once you get back the news from the insurance, see what it is, and that'll be helpful. Hopefully, we see a bigger...
It could make a, it could make another percent.
Right, so that's, that's good to hear. So it's something that out of our hands to control the costs are going to be, but hopefully it comes back minimal or nothing, so it'd be nice to see. So, Mayor?
Quietly, I think, and I guess I spoke of it publicly also, but quietly, we are trying to work back toward that five percent overall increase, and so if we go higher as a placeholder and continue to work in that direction, I think that's important. If we look at, again, being of value to our citizens, giving them the services that they would expect at, at a cost that they're comfortable with, that's what we're all about. And I do appreciate, again, as everybody has said, the selfless way that everybody's gone about this, and from everything that Mr. Murphy has said, our department has each one by one have put the greater good ahead of their own department, and that's very important. I think as we continue this process, that's going to continue, the, the cooperative way that this has gone, and I do appreciate that. I think everybody understands just exactly the constraints that we have on the revenue side, and then trying to work to that number. And again, if we could get to five, that would mean that the individual family would see some lower number. We don't know from the county yet what that would be, but some, some fraction of that. And, and so our, our goal is to always work toward a, a formula that shows growth of our city plus a reasonable inflation factor. Everything has to go up by some small percentage, but the, the sum of growth plus inflation would allow the individual family to see just normal inflationary increases over time, not unusual increases beyond that. So that would be our hope. Just so you know, when we speak of it, at least myself, that's what I speak of, and I do hear others talk in that same way.
Anybody else have anything at this time? See none, unless you have anything to add?
Only that will, Megan will put together the resolution to vote on it on Tuesday.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Request, request to update the purchasing policy, Sanderson?
Thank you. The state of Minnesota has increased their dollar amount, which Steve kind of mentioned today, so attached in your packet was what we currently use for purchases, then the Minnesota state requirements, and then what we as a, as a department, Mr. Murphy and I, have came up with proposals for the new purchasing, which is within the state guidelines, it's actually more strict, but we are more comfortable with, with this. So we're just trying to see if this, if there's any questions, any comments on this, and if, if not, we will actually put this within the policy.
Anybody have any questions on it? Pretty straightforward, appreciate it.
The, oh, the only question I got from somebody was if this is something we could implement immediately. I don't know if there's any...
Oh, I think we should move it on. We've got trained people in all our departments, and it expedites the process of government, and certainly the administrator has proven himself, and I think it's a move in the right direction.
And I think you should put it on...
Well, I mean, once the policy's put together, yeah.
Once it's put together, put it on for approval, and just have the, the council voted up or down.
Okay.
Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. So what would happen in the case of like this one, where our, our current purchasing, or I guess I'm looking at this one, so we would move that up to one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand for the, for the competitive quotes? Okay. So what happens then? I just think, once you start to get to that hundred and some plus, you start seeing at smaller percentages, greater variability over, you know, whatever. So if you're looking at a one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar project, you know, a ten percent change is twenty thousand dollars, plus or minus, so now you're talking two-hundred thousand. I'm just wondering if all of a sudden we're going to be into that gray area more often, like this one, where, well, it isn't the case because of the law on beginning of August, but we could have been in a spot where we would have quoted a job that we thought was going to be eighty-six thousand, and ended up being a hundred plus, and I just wonder if we should, if we need to have that, that high of a bar, even though we can, at one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand?
Actually, we did discuss this as far as staff and as far as department heads, and I know City Attorney McCallstead is aware of that, and he had, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, Ron, but if you could reiterate what you told us at our, at our meeting? As far as that aspect?
Regarding, if the question is specifically the eighty-six thousand going up to a hundred-and-fourteen, that in and of itself, because it was a good faith estimate that we went off of, and we went off of bids, you wouldn't have to go rebid it according to state law.
Quotes, not it's...
Or, well, I misspoke. Off of quotes, you wouldn't have to go pull it and bid it off the state law based upon a good faith estimate. But your point is well taken. The other thing of it is, is even, even because it's only a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar contract, there's nothing that says that the city can't go out for competitive bids on it if you think that you're going to have a better, a better group of individuals, or, or get better pricing because of it. So you can always ask for more than a few quotes.
Well, and I guess it just, if we're going to start moving, and maybe we, we need to think about purchases across different, you know, different types of services, different types of products, as being different, because if you're talking about a project, all of a sudden, I just know, I've seen a lot of quotes come through here, and you bring them in, and there's a lot of, well, A isn't necessarily A, and B isn't necessarily B. Now, if we're all of a sudden increasing that threshold, are we opening ourselves up to a little bit more, you know, a little bit more? And I think we try to do it, like, like what Steve was saying, we try to get it in expediently, but, you know, I just, I've seen too many quotes come through where a guy gives a quote, and he thinks he's done this, but he excludes this thing, and this guy didn't exclude it, and he's going to spec this thing that isn't exactly spec'd on this, and, you know, I just, as they start creeping up, they start to get more and more. Now, we're also seeing that our equipment's getting more expensive, so if, you know, Gary needs to go out and get some, a new pump or something, then it's a one-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand dollars or whatever, you know, I, I don't have a problem with something like that, that's a basically an off-the-shelf, or, you know, type of thing, but, but when we're starting to talk about these, I just wonder if we need to have a carve-out for, for different types, or, I don't know, I just, I don't want to make a problem out of it either. I mean, having it in place doesn't tell us we have to do it, but I also, I can see some problems coming up if all of a sudden you're just quoting these out.
But I think we have to rely on, like Mr. Emery did tonight, came to us and said, let's reject him, because I think we can do better. I mean, I think that's our fail-safe there, fallback with the people that we have on staff that can come back to us and tell us this. So that's, that's my opinion on it.
I guess my, the other thing is, is the, the nice thing about, from the city's perspective, is with a sealed bid, closed bid, it kind of takes any, any, even presumption of irregularity out of our hands. Now, as that value goes up, there's going to be more incentive on whomever, if it's a, a dealer of whatever versus another dealer of whatever. All of a sudden, you're talking about a two-hundred-thousand-dollar thing versus a fifty-thousand-dollar thing, you know, you may see a little bit more of an effort to, you know, hold our feet to the fire, or make sure that we've made every logical, and like I said, I, I think we have the people that can do it, I just foresee, it's, it's just a, you know, it seems like it might be expedient on the front end, but I just see a lot more headaches coming down the pike.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, and I guess, each project, you'd have to look at it as far as what the merits are. Sealed bids are probably the preferred method to go. You typically get your better prices with a sealed bid than you would be with a quote, because either they don't know what the other, they have really no clue what the other companies are going to bid. So, you know, and we're talking to, moving up to one-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand for, for the, being able to just get quotes, however, several of our projects that are below that, we still would most likely go with a sealed bid, just because it's probably going to give us the, our, our best option. So I understand your concerns. I do, however, like that we do have the option to do this if need be, particularly if something where expediency is an issue, just because the sealed bid portion can take quite a while, so...
I think also too, if they come forth to us and ask for permission to request to put it up for quotes or bids, or whatever you call, want to call it, that we can say at that time, no, we, we want the bids, we want them closed.
And that's fine, sometimes we don't necessarily see it right before, or whatever, you know, if it's a thing, so I would say that was going to be my next comment, is it needs to be part of the, the request to council is, I request that this is a quote, or I request that this is a, a sealed bid type of thing, and we can have that as part of our debate on some of these.
I don't really see that as an issue.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's a reasonable request.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Carla, sorry?
Sorry, I forgot to mention that the last box in the proposed purchasing is that we also have been doing lots of purchases through the state of Minnesota Cooperative Purchasing Venture, or the National Joint Purchasing Alliance, which is now Sourcewell. And so what happens is the state or these groups actually do those competitive bidding, so we don't have to do it, it's already been done, and we have been getting a lot of our equipment that way at a better price than if we just went and did it ourselves, so just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that.
Appreciate it. Anything else from anybody? I see none, thank you so much. Number six, consideration renewing the agreement with Department of Motor Vehicle, Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. The lease that we have with the state of Minnesota for the driver's examination station, which is located at our parkset rec garage out there on Fifth Avenue Northeast, is up, and they would like to renew that. The last lease we had was for three years with a two-year extension, which they did, which they did utilize. So I guess with this, we're looking at, right, right now, what we get from them is thirteen-hundred dollars per year, they pay us quarterly for three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. They are out there on Wednesdays from nine-thirty until three-thirty PM, they're there most Wednesdays, I believe there are some that they do not always head out there. So what we've found is that the cost is basically just to utilize, for what they might be using for utilities, those type of things, since they're not full-time tenants out there. So with that, they are requesting that we, we move forward with a new lease based on the same terms. So I guess with that, I don't really see this as being an option for money-making based on thirteen-hundred dollars per year, the thirteen-hundred dollars still covers our utilities and what it costs for us to have them out there. So I guess with that, I would recommend that we move forward with the same terms.
Anybody have any questions regarding that? See none, thank you, sir. Number seven, request to purchase pickup for public works. Mr. Stordahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. City budgeted thirty-thousand dollars on the C I D for a new pickup for public works. We received contract pricing through the associate contract with the manager GM. The price to replace was, or the price for the new pickup was twenty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two-seventy. And my recommendation is to purchase the pickup through manager GM.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Stordahl?
Moving on.
Mr. Murphy?
Oh, bed liner in it?
Yes.
Okay. I just, well, sometimes they come bare.
Anybody else? See none, thank you, Mr. Stordahl. Consideration of annual crack sealing, Mr. Stordahl?
Every year, the city's, not in the last few years only, but as a preventative measure, joint slash crack seals approximately a hundred thousand millimeter feet pavement. I'd like to do the same this year. We got quotations from Op Construction and Northwest Asphalt Maintenance, and my recommendation is to go with Northwest Asphalt. And maintenance for crack sealing, a hundred thousand millimeter feet for seventy-five-thousand.
Anybody have any questions to Mr. Stordahl? Mr. Tweed?
I, I would like to see him put a, enlarge, put filling in the cracks, and fill in a panel by Peterson's Veterinary Clinic. He has made a substantial investment there, and it, if we leave it the way it is, it's going to get worse and cost lots more. There are other people who are beneficiaries, members of Christ the King Church, the intersection's been done, plus there's, there's dozens of new homes, that's the entrance to new homes. So you're taking and getting rid of a large number of, of conditions that affect a lot of people, and I hope next year, why, you'll be able to put the cracks in by the Legion and Sanford Hospital and the Eagles, and there's some panels there. And we've got thousands of people that are on those streets through the year or so. Jason has made a priority on keeping up with this thing, and I'm certain he'll do a good job on it.
Anything else? Anything to add? All right, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Move on a little bit.
Number nine, request to apply for multicultural center, Mr. Gordy?
Several months ago, this is the, what DECO started, and what you, I, Councilman Grassil originally participated in.
Yes.
Started working on a multicultural center that would address ways to improve cultural relations and cultural understanding all the way across the board, and it's not just with Somali culture versus the more Nordic culture or Germanic cultures that many of the people in this area come from, but there's also a Latino, Hispanic issue that we have to deal with, so it would be a broadly-based cultural program. And we've been meeting, the mayor and I have both been involved in this, that's why the mayor's name is on here, I talked with him, and he said make sure his name is on here. We have an opportunity to apply for a grant that requires no local match, it would be up to a hundred thousand dollars from the North... $100,000 from the Northwest Minnesota Foundation, which is located in Mimi. We would be doing it in conjunction with the school district, with North Central, Northland Community and Technical College, and with at least one not-for, not-for-profit social service, social service agency. Say that fast, lots of times. Again, it is a grant of $100,000. What they are looking for is a letter of intent by early October. We'd like to be able to move forward to participate in this, this community effort. And if there are any costs, we'll bring them back to you, but we do not anticipate any local costs at this time.
What is that, grant for, for purchase or of existing and remodel?
It can go for a lot of different things, that's part of it. But how to make the program work, how to set up the program, to make sure that it's institutionalized, so it becomes an ongoing process. It will also be, because of some of the people we're working with, looking at ways that long-term funding can be assured, that it will not require a local funding or city funding or something like that as well.
So who would be the, that city be involved in that, EDA be involved in that, or is that something that, the nonprofit that owns it then?
Yes. We don't know yet. Okay. So I can't answer that question. I will tell you that NCTC has volunteered their, their grant writer, because they will be involved in the program. So they will be involved, and they, it remains to be seen as we do this, who will be the actual owner of this. I don't know.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Vedder?
I'm unclear. You're going to use this grant to purchase or build a building?
No. No.
Okay. So what are you using the grant dollars for?
The grant is to do the study, to make sure that this is possible on how to make this work, and can lead to, and the grant money could be used for facilities. But it's not, that will be determined as the work goes forward.
So it's pretty much up in the air grant?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
I don't think we want our city name associated with that type of a grant. I won't be voting for it.
Does anybody think, Ted? Mr. Gordy, thank you so much.
I'm sorry?
Looking for vote next week, resolution? Do you need one or?
Do I need one from you at this point? If we do, then yes, we need to do that to move forward. It's just so we can participate with the rest of the group.
Begging to resolution for next week, and we can vote on it. Mr. Demers?
Um, I guess just, I'm fine with going out and trying to get it. I'm just wondering, having dealt with, you know, the Northwest Minnesota Foundation and other groups, just wondering what the, the governance structure is going to be if that has to be lined out before you apply? Because here's, I guess, I just wonder, from the city perspective, we want to do this. Obviously, people have been, you guys have been putting your stuff in. I want the city to be, have some sort of, whether you want it to say legal strings attached to that dollars in, in a way that we want to, you know, do it. I just know we, I've done some of the stuff with the, you know, Red River Valley, you know, board, and that ended up being a joint powers commission. So we had to end up going through all this stuff, and we outlined, you know, who has a say, you know, how you deal with those type of things. So when, when this pile of money comes in, there's got to be a, there's got to be someone that's a fiscal agent, there's got to be someone that's got to be, you know, there's got to be something outlined that says that we have, there's a governance. You know, can anybody, after these five people, can you add more people? Can only two people decide what to do with it?
Okay. What we're submitting, what we are looking to submit is a letter of intent. When Northwest Minnesota Foundation gets the letters of intent, they will go out to interview each of the groups to make sure that it's achieving the goals. Northwest Minnesota Foundation will be controlling the dollars. So if there is a bill that's involved, I presume that they will be the one who does it with the money that's reserved in the amount of $100,000 under the grant. Okay? So it's not locked into just four agencies or four groups. If other people participate, they can be, they could participate as well.
And I'm assuming that you're saying that this grant is particularly, or at least part for a study, that study's going to essentially talk about how you're going to set up your, your governing board and body and any of the rules and regulations that are affiliated with it.
So you're looking to hire a consultant or some sort of a staff person with it?
No staff person. No staff person. It, it, the way the group is working, I think there's a very good chance it'll be done within the group itself. I do not expect that a consultant will be hired to do this, but I would expect, because a couple of the agencies that we've been talking with, the social service agencies, do have expertise in this area. So everybody's pitching in with their own backgrounds and expertise, and because of their expertise, I would imagine, and I would expect that we'll be able to be guided in that regard. Like I said, NCTC is providing the staff, the, the grant writer to do this, because they have someone with skills. It's whoever has the skills participates and provides that area of expertise.
And that's fine. I guess, like I said, I think it's a worthy cause, and I, I want something like this to, to proceed and be successful. I just. The people at the table have been the school district, the city, Coalition for...
Global Friends?
Global Friends.
Global Friends.
That's it. Lutheran Social Services.
NCTC.
NCTC. Am I missing somebody?
We're missing somebody. There are about, about five or six different groups that have been involved so far.
So, we have a site in mind that we have brought to the school district's attention. And we'll just leave it at that for right now. So we're, they're not going to be building a building, they're not going to be, they're just looking at trying to get this thing up and running. NCTC is very interested in doing it because they need, they would like to tap into the education of these people. They're having difficult time getting more than five people involved in a program that they had running that's been very successful. In fact, they had a, a program up and running, and they had five graduates, they all took jobs, or they had five people involved. Four of them graduated, one took a job before he graduated. So he was out of there before. So they're just having difficult time with that kind of stuff. So they see this as a benefit. There's all kinds of things being thrown out. So I think this is kind of a way to help guide the group to get going in the right direction.
And this is an unexpected funding opportunity that just came up within the last 30 to 45 days. The announcement came out the Friday before Labor Day. So we're following up as we get information as quickly as we can. We have a meeting set up for Friday morning to talk about how to prepare the grant and provide the input into, to the grant writer so that that can proceed. And that the grant writer will be, will be preparing the letter of intent to address all the issues that are required within the grant application.
Okay. Wonderful. Great cause. Anybody else have anything to that? All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Update on special events. Ms. Nielsen?
Okay. Just wanted to bring a few things to your guys' attention before it was just added to the agenda for next week. The VFW would like to grill in the gravel lot next to them during the, during the potato bowl parade. There's nothing that's required from us. They've already given me the information from the Department of Health showing that they have a special event applica, or a special event license that they can use for something like this. Nothing is needed from us. They just want to grill out and sell hamburgers and hot dogs, or I'm not entirely sure what the menu will be during the parade. Any questions on that? Okay. Just this, last week, I got the application for the Wild Hog Half and Full Marathon. Their routes changed slightly. They're utilizing more of the greenway. They will not be running across the Sorley Bridge this year, but we will be shutting down the Point Bridge. In the RCA, did say we're looking for MINDOT approval. MINDOT informed me that we control the Point Bridge. They don't need to give approval. It's not on one of their major roads. It's not their bridge. So as long as it's okay with you guys, we'll be shutting down the bridge for this. There's also sections of the south end of town that they'll be running through the neighborhoods. And I believe every year, or since they've been doing that, the people out with Wild Hog Marathon has sent out letters notifying the residents that this is coming. And I do believe Public Works has a project going on on the bridge during this time as well. So they'll kind of be working with this project to address some things on the Point Bridge. And then lastly, the beer tasting tour, I know that there have been advertisements and stuff for it. As of this afternoon, I'm still waiting on the certificate of liability, but I do believe I'll probably get that tomorrow. They tried to work with some nonprofit groups within our city. They did not find one that had time or was gonna, it was going to work because they were busy with other things. They're going to be working with Development Homes to apply for a temporary liquor license. Development Homes is based out of Grand Forks. They have been established for at least three years. They're going to be contracting for liquor services with Up, Up North. So you will see that temporary liquor license next week, along with their special event application. The VFW has had two events scheduled for that evening and expect about 300 people to show up. So I have been letting late in broadcasting know that they need to try and get the parking lot open as quickly as possible to allow for parking for their stuff that is going on as well. Other than that, do you guys have any questions about that? But otherwise?
On the Wild Hog front, they, last Tuesday night, they did host a public forum at the library and for residents in the infected area, and absolutely no one showed up.
What are the hours of that marathon? Or what, I guess, what hours will we have the bridge closed?
The passage typically is down where we're going to open. I haven't looked that closely to maps of this, or I think it's by about noon, it's opening, isn't it, as the bridges?
Yeah, that's right.
Runs usually in the morning.
It might be closed a little bit longer, just because we have to do some bridge work, and we're going to try to do it at the same time. So.
It needs to be open by that time, right?
Yep.
That's just, well, doesn't help the guy, the people on the, on the far end of the point. I mean, we're kind of hamstringing some of those.
Your bridge better. Your bridge push.
Yeah. Well, it's part of the point. So, and that's a, is the 18th a Saturday or Sunday? Saturday, from early till noon.
Okay. The, it's going to be on the agenda on the 18th.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And the Wild Hog Marathon is going to be on September 29th, which is a Saturday.
29th?
Yes. Sorry. Nope. It's just saying it was being added to the 18th agenda. So, yeah, it'll be the last Saturday.
Just need to know what day to, watch my phones, because I'm sure people will be complaining because they got to all drive north a couple miles. On the, the beer tasting thing, one thing I was thinking about is, you know, we, we're working on trying to figure out if we can do something with hauling, but, you know, we, we can't decide when people want to do their events. But, you know, since we do, do the permitting and stuff, I think one suggestion may be that we look to do this after harvest, or try to schedule it closer to after harvest. I think it might be a better, it might be more fun for the city to, to do, kind of try, try to do a more harvest-based celebration, you know, in the tradition of what it used to be. And maybe we can get some more partners with Crystal Sugar and all those people to come in and, and really celebrate what, you know, the agriculture roots, even though roots isn't our thing. But connecting different groups and farmers and businesses around that, that harvest might be something we should look at for next year.
They originally wanted to use, or were looking at the Civic Center, but when they want to do it, it's the weekend of the Arts and Crafts Show, and there's already an app right after that, there's ice being put on. So I know that they were looking at other venues for it, and this is just kind of where they ended up at, but definitely a suggestion to give to them.
Anybody else have anything?
We talked about extra law enforcement on. Have they talked to you about any of that stuff?
They have. It's, with the Up North events with the concert, we just added two officers as I thought it was about.
And we send them a bill for that?
Anybody else have anything? Not entertain a motion to adjourn. Who by, repeal? Second by Vedder, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourned.
It looked like rain there.
We were supposed to get some.
Okay.
Thirty, forty percent, I think.